Okay, let's hear a quick word of prayer before we start. Lord, we thank you for this evening. Thank you for giving us another day, another day to be with you, another day to glorify your name. Father, even as we've gathered together to share your word, to learn at your feet, Father, open our minds, give us understanding. Breathe your word into us. Father, give us attentive ears. Give us questioning minds. Let our learning not end here. But even after the session, let us continue to inquire. Let's continue to search the scriptures. And may you satisfy our hunger and thirst for truth. We thank you in Jesus' name. Amen. Okay, so I think I'll share my screen with you. We'll begin with a quick catch-up or roundup of the previous session, and then we will go right into it. So what we've been doing the past few sessions is we've been talking about the nature of God, and that has led us to talk about the nature, you know, God's triune nature. The fact that God is not just one, he is one being, but he is three persons as well. We began by trying to actually dissect that particular truth. And then we decided to take a little bit of a change approach and go into the scriptures and show the different manifestations of God and see what the scriptures actually say. Because it's one thing to say that the Bible says this or that about God. It's another thing to say, look, let's study the Bible. Let's open the Bible for ourselves. Let's see what the Bible says, and let's see if we will actually come up with that conclusion ourselves. Then our certainty, our faith would be based on our own understanding of the truth, and we would be on firmer grounds. So I feel like it's a much better way to do it. In doing that, we've seen different manifestations of God in the Old Testament. We've zeroed in on a particular phenomenon called the angel of the Lord, or a person called the angel of the Lord. And we've seen that this angel of the Lord is significantly different from your average angel. We compared him to angel Gabriel, who manifested, or who was sent to Mary, to Joseph, you know, to Daniel, and who did not hesitate in revealing his identity. His identity was no mystery. He was quite happy to just say, this is my name. Indeed, in Daniel's prophecy, the angel's, the angel's name is called out in Daniel's presence. Gabriel, make this man understand the vision, is, you know, a voice called out. So it's clear that there's nothing mysterious about the names of angels. Angels don't put themselves in that category of mysterious beings. They are servants, sent to minister to those who will become hairs of salvation. That includes not just believers, but people who are on their way to becoming saved. It's God sends out angels to help them as well, to protect them as well. If you and I were not protected, if you and I were not, you know, if we hadn't had the help of God, I can assure you, we would not be where we are today. It's because we had the help of God, we had the help of God even before we were saved. God had to protect us, make sure that we would live to see the day we would believe. So angels have been present in our lives without us knowing it. The angels are servants of God. But what we've seen so far is that we should not be, we should not be focusing too much on angelic manifestations or visitations. That's really not where our focus ought to be. Our focus ought to be on knowing God. Angels are servants of God. God uses them, but we don't serve angels. We don't fellowship with angels. We fellowship with God. So we know that there's a difference between the angel of the Lord, as described in the Old Testament, and these other angelic manifestations, where angels are sent to specific tasks on earth. Okay, we've seen that some of the examples, we've looked at. One, Jacob's experience at Bethel. At Bethel, Jacob saw a dream. He saw a ladder. In his dream, he saw a ladder reaching all the way to heaven from the earth, and angels ascending and descending upon that ladder. And then he saw the Lord standing at the top of the ladder, and the Lord made some promises and made a covenant with Jacob. Later on, the Lord, the angel of the Lord revealed himself to Jacob in a dream and told him, "I am the Lord. I am the God of Bethel." In other words, this person, who the Bible later refers to as the angel of the Lord, was actually the God of Bethel. So we got to see that that angel was no mere angel. We explained that the word angel actually means messenger. The Hebrew term is malach, and malach means messenger or angel. It can be translated messenger, it can be translated angel. Incidentally, it's the same in the Greek. The Greek word angelos can also be translated messenger or angel. It's the reason why in Revelations, chapter, chapters 1 to 3, in the messages to the seven churches, the Bible says, "And to the angel of the church in Ephesus," right? It's not referring to an angel assigned to the church of Ephesus, because angels don't need letters written by humans. No. They receive their instructions directly from the Lord. So that's referring to the messenger, or if you like, the pastor or the chief elder. He is the one that this letter was addressed to. So we sort of cleared that up. Now, today we want to gradually move into an intriguing passage found in the Bible, Genesis, chapter 18. Before we get to that though, there's a certain interesting passage I found that I want to share with you. Okay, you all know this passage from Isaiah, chapter 9, verse 6. And, you know, we quote it especially at Christmas. "For unto us a child is born, unto us a son is given, and the government will be upon his shoulder, and his name will be called Wonderful Counselor, Mighty God, Everlasting Father, Prince of Peace." And it's very interesting, as I was studying, I discovered that the name wonderful given to Jesus, the word translated wonderful comes from a Hebrew word. The verb form of that word is pala, and is to be marvelous, to be wonderful, etc. Do you remember the angel of the Lord who appeared to Samson's parents when he was asked, "What's your name?" What was his response? He said, "Why do you ask my name, seeing it is wonderful?" And the word is an adjective form of that word, pala, that we, we, we saw in Isaiah 9:6. So, and it also means wonderful, incomprehensible, beyond understanding, extraordinary. So it's very interesting that the name that Jesus, Isaiah prophesied Jesus would be called, well, this angel of the Lord said, "That's, you know, my name is too wonderful for you. It's wonderful." So it's very, very interesting. It just shows you that the Bible is full of little clues all over, and it takes careful study to discover them. You know, God could, you know, you know, put all of these wonderful truths in one chapter of the Bible. But the Bible makes it very clear that Lord, it is the glory of God to conceal it in the honor of kings, to seek those things out. The Lord, it pleases him that when we search for truth, he says, "Draw near to me and I'll draw near to you. Seek, and ye shall find." So God loves it when we, we actually make that concerted effort to, to seek the truth. Now let's go to Genesis 18. And I'm going to take you to Bible Gateway, the website Bible Gateway, so we can read directly from there. So on Bible Gateway, and I'm reading from the New King James Version. You know, you can change versions. You can select any version you want. Okay, so BibleGateway.com, a very useful website. All right, so Genesis, chapter 18, let's read. "Then the Lord appeared to him by the terribent trees of Mamre." Now, there's a little bit of context there. You see, in chapter 17, the Lord had already appeared to Abraham, had given him instructions about circumcising his, all the males in his household, and Abraham had done that. So this is sort of continuation from there, and then so it's like the next thing. "And then here the Lord appeared to him by the terribent trees of Mamre, as he was sitting in the tent door in the heat of the day. So he lifted his eyes and looked, and behold, three men were standing by him; and when he saw them, he ran from the tent door to meet them, and bowed himself to the ground, and said, 'My Lord, if I have now found favor in your sight, do not pass on by your servant. Please let a little water be brought and wash your feet, and rest yourselves under the tree; and I will bring a muesle of bread, that you may refresh your hearts, after that you may pass by inasmuch as you have come to your servant.' They said, 'Do as you have said.' So Abraham hurried into the tent to Sarah and said quickly, 'Make ready three measures of fine meal; knead it and make cakes.' And Abraham ran to the head, took a tender and good calf, gave it to a young man, and he hastened to prepare it. So he took butter and milk and the calf which he had prepared, and set it before them, and he stood by them under the tree as they ate. Then they said to him, 'Where is Sarah, your wife?' So he said, 'Here, in the tent.' And he said, 'I will certainly return to you according to the time of life; and behold, Sarah, your life, your wife, sorry, shall have a son.' Sarah was listening in the tent door, which was behind him. Now Abraham and Sarah were old, well advanced in age, and Sarah had passed the age of childbearing. Therefore Sarah laughed within herself, saying, 'After I have grown old, shall I have pleasure, my Lord being old also?' And the Lord said to Abraham, 'Why did Sarah laugh, saying, 'Shall I surely bear a child since I am old? Is anything too hard for the Lord? At the appointed time, I will return to you according to the time of life, and Sarah shall have a son.' But Sarah denied it, saying, 'I did not laugh, for she was afraid.' And he said, 'No, but you did laugh.' Then the man rose from there and looked towards Sodom, and Abraham went with them to send them on their way. And the Lord said, 'Shall I hide from Abraham what I am doing? Since Abraham shall surely become a great and mighty nation, and all the nations of the earth shall be blessed in him; for I have known him in honor that he may command his children and his household after him, that they may keep the way of the Lord, to do righteousness and justice, that the Lord may bring to Abraham what he has spoken to him.' And the Lord said, 'Because the outcry against Sodom and Gomorrah is great, and because their sin is very grave, I will go down now and see whether they have done altogether according to the outcry against it that has come to me; and if not, I will know.' Then the man turned away from there and went toward Sodom; but Abraham still stood before the Lord. And Abraham came near and said, 'Would you also destroy the righteous with the wicked? Suppose there were fifty righteous within the city; would you also destroy the place and not spare it for the fifty righteous that were in it? Far be it from you to do such a thing as this, to slay the righteous with the wicked, so that the righteous should be as the wicked; far be it from you; shall not the judge of all the earth do right? So the Lord said, 'If I find in Sodom fifty righteous within the city, then I will spare all the place for their sakes.' Then Abraham answered and said, 'Indeed, now I who am but dust and ashes have taken it upon myself to speak to the Lord. Suppose there were five less than fifty righteous? Would you destroy all the city for lack of five?' So he said, 'If I find there forty-five, I will not destroy it.' And he spoke to him yet again and said, 'Suppose there should be forty, forty, found there, sorry.' So he said, 'I will not do it for the sake of forty.' Then he said, 'Let not the Lord be angry, and I will speak.' Suppose there thirty should be found there? So he said, 'I will not do it if I find thirty there.' And he said, 'Indeed, now I have taken it upon myself to speak to the Lord. Suppose twenty should be found there? So he said, 'I will not destroy it for the sake of twenty.' Then he said, 'Let not the Lord be angry, and I will speak, but once more. Suppose ten should be found there? And he said, 'I will not destroy it for the sake of ten.' So the Lord went his way as soon as he had finished speaking with Abraham, and Abraham returned to his place. So this is the passage, a very intriguing one, and if you do a Google search, you'll discover that, you know, this passage intrigues many, many Bible commentators and Bible teachers. And there are various, you know, views out there as to the identities of the three men who appeared to Abraham. So today, let's begin with a little discussion, as we do normally. You go around. Or if you want to go first, then feel free to unmute yourself. And the question is, who were these men? Were they just men? Were they angels? Were, you know, or God? Do we think that yes, one of them was God, or do we think? You know, just, just tell me what, you know, let's, let's have an open discussion about what you think about the identity of the three men. Okay, so let me see who's here today, so I can, we can go around. Okay, so let's start with you, Sue. What, what do you think? Who were these three men?
Hello.
Hello.
Please, I thought today I'm going to ask to be skipped and come back to me. I think I didn't, I didn't put the whole procedure, I was driving, so.
Okay, okay, no problem.
Another person starts here.
Okay, no problem. Okay. Welcome on board, Rebecca. Sister Rebecca, welcome on board. Welcome, Richmond. Okay. So Irene can't, can't respond at the moment, no Irene, Sue. So I'll come to you, Irene. We want to know the identity of the three men. What do you think? You know, you don't have to be right. We, this is a Bible study. We're trying to discuss. We're trying to get to the bottom of this. But.
Okay, well, in my opinion, it's, it was God. And the, by the scripture, when, when he saw the three men, he, he said, "My Lord, my Lord." He, he, he didn't recognize, he didn't see them as ordinary people passing by. And he was specific. He was addressing a being, and he, he knew that it was God. So that is my opinion.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes. So I'll come to you, Richmond. What do you think? Who do you think this person was? Or these three men were?
Okay. Good evening once again.
Good evening.
What I've read about this passage, I, I think it was God. In fact, there was this day I was having a discussion with some friends of mine, and they were telling me it was God the Son, God the Father, and God the Holy Spirit. So, but that was what we argued on that time.
Okay.
And they tried to convince me that it was God. They were not just mere angels, but it was God himself who came to Abraham. So that's what I've known all this long.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. I think there are, there are a lot of people out there who, who also voice the same opinion. They think, you know, it's God the Father, God the Son, God the Holy Spirit. Yes. So there are different views out there. But yes, it's good that we sort of have a discussion, and then we look at the text to support any argument, any sort of belief that we, we express, that we can see what exactly what passage, what verses we're using to support that. Thank you for that. So I'll come to you, Araba. What do you think?
Good evening once again. Good evening, everyone. You know, you asked us to read the, you know, the, the whole Genesis 18.
Yes.
And I just decided to read the tree.
Oh, okay. Good.
Yes, I, so.
Good. I haven't read the tree in a long time. Well done. Yes.
Yeah, normally I read tree, like I, even in church, I try to read tree.
Good.
But I, as I was reading, like, I was, I was thinking, okay, this, this, this is the, God the Father, God the Son, maybe the three of them. And then, what, you know, when I go to the place where they said, and he, I mean, Sarah baked cakes for them, and in the tree he said, "Oh, to Tatarim, I don't say, I'm going to Tatarim." But God is spirit, and that he teaches that every hour, you know, just. So then, but when they go, you know, that's when he said, "Ah, shall I do anything without telling you?" You know, then it means that shall I do anything? An angel will not typically say that. I mean, the intention, what, God, it was God who destroyed Sodom and Gomorrah, not an angel. I mean, so the, the fact that he said that, "Shall I do anything with that?" Because Abraham is going to, you know, means that, yes, it was God himself, but because they were three, it confuses me, because even in the chapter, I think it's two. It said, "The three men left, and Abraham was still before the Lord."
Mm-hmm. Good. That's a very good spot. Yes.
Yes. So I, I don't understand, because I, they left, but he was still before the Lord. So was he communicating in spirit? You know, so I, I, there's a lot of things going on in my mind. Maybe someone else will play it up. I know at the end of the year, I understand.
Yes. It's, it's no, it's a very intriguing passage. There's no question about that. I mean, if you read this passage and you don't have any questions at all, well, I want to shake your hand. It's, it's, it's not an easy passage to understand, that we can, we can approach it doctrinally. You see, because one of the things about being a Christian is that we already have a view. So we already have a view about certain things. So for example, somebody said, like Richmond said, that, you know, you were debating over the identities, and then somebody said it was Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. But you can only say that because you are a New Testament believer, because you already have the idea, the concept of Trinity. But imagine that you didn't have the concept of Trinity, of the Trinity. How would you approach something, a text like that? You know, you wouldn't be thinking about Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. You would be looking at, okay, here I've got a text in front of me. I've got three men visiting Abraham. They are talking to him, and they are saying certain things that maybe give us clues about who they are. So that's what I'd like us to do right now, to, to try and analyze the things they were saying, to see whether those words themselves give us an indication of who they are. And Araba has already kicked us off by saying that, you know, that he was making some definitive statements, for example, about Sodom and Gomorrah, that you don't expect an angel to be making. Okay, so let's, let's do some analysis. Now, the first thing to note when you're reading this passage is the use of the term Lord. And it is in some respects unfortunate that in the English language, we are just left with one word, Lord, and it's being used everywhere. Why do I say it's unfortunate? It's because in the Greek, sorry, in the Hebrew, different words are used. For us, we're just left with Lord. Okay, so I'm going to take you to BibleStudyTools.com and show you how the different words have been used. Can you see this page, Bible Study Tools? So this website makes it possible for you to do, to study or to do a word study. So you can say, okay, the word Lord, I want to know exactly how many times it's been used in this passage and what it means each time it's used. Okay. So to get to that, you need to, you, when you visit this website, BibleStudyTools.com, then if you click on this, these parallel lines here, and look for interlinear Bible, interlinear Bible. If you click on that, it takes you to the page where you have interlinear Bible. And it's called interlinear because you're going to get English and then with the Hebrew beneath it. And for the New Testament, it'll be English and with the Greek beneath it. So that way, you can see if you can read Greek, you can read it directly. But you can also click on hyperlinks of the English words, which will take you straight to the Greek and its, you know, meaning. So that's what we're going to do. Let's search for Genesis, chapter 18. See, so this is Genesis, chapter 18. Genesis, chapter 18, and you see each verse is followed by the Hebrew, you know, the Hebrew text. So you've got a Hebrew text there, and then you've got an English one. Okay. So the first thing you'll notice here is that the Lord appears, and the Lord appeared unto him, referring to Abraham, because this is a continuation of a story that began in chapter 17. So that's why there's no mention of the person. It just says him. It's referring to Abraham. But who is this Lord? And what do you see? Yehovah. Now we say Jehovah, that is, you know, that's anglicized when you say Jehovah. This name of God actually was, in the original Hebrew, it exists in the form of four letters. Yud, hay, vav, hay. Y, H, W, H. The W is pronounced either as a V or as a W, so it can be vav or it can be vav. So it's like yud, hay, vah, hay. Yud, that would be the Y. Hay is for, you know, the H. Vav, hay. Now, the original Hebrew text didn't have any vowels. They only had consonants. So later on, as the language evolved, they inserted vowels. There's a group of scriptures. to make it easier for other people to read the Hebrew. So that is why some people will say Jehovah and other people will say Yahweh, is the same thing. Now, in chapter eighteen, as we saw, Moses began by saying Jehovah appeared to Abraham. So if you read something like that, the next thing is, oh, let's see, he appeared to Abraham. How did Jehovah appear to Abraham? In fact, just sticking to the text alone, you have your explanation. You don't have to go any further. It states Jehovah appeared. Remember that Abra, um Moses, the person who was credited with in writing the book of Genesis, he was hundreds, four hundred years removed from the incidents that he was describing, from the events he was describing, I should say. And he now had the hindsight, he now had the knowledge of God's name Yahweh. Do you know that the name Yahweh was not known to Abraham? How do I know that? I'll take you there. Exodus, chapter six, verse three, five verses two and three. And God spoke to Moses and said to him, I am the Lord. That's Yahweh. I appeared to Abraham, to Isaac and to Jacob, as God Almighty, that's Elshadai. But by my name, Lord, which is Yahweh, I was not known to them. God is saying, look, my name is Yahweh, but I appeared to Abraham, Isaac and Jacob, not as Yahweh, but as Elshadai. They did not know my name Yahweh. So that's very, very interesting. So when you're reading it, you've got to understand that Abraham is not, not thinking about, you know, Yahweh, he's thinking about Adonai, which was a more of a general term. Adonai was used to refer to his like ser. So F was plural, then you know, ser's, that's Adonai. However, when it's written, uh, in the, in the form that is written that you see, which is Adonai, A-D-O-N-A-I, it's almost always refer, it almost always refers to the Lord, to God. Okay, so, so just bear in mind, you go Adonai, you go Elshadai, and you got Yahweh. In Genesis eighteen, Moses writes Yahweh appeared, because he, by that time, he knew God as Yahweh, because, you know, he, 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 he was writing retrospectively. So he already knew God as Yahweh, and he said Yahweh appeared to Abraham. Okay, go back to eighteen, Genesis eighteen. So you can easily insert your word, and there are some Bible versions that use Yahweh or Jehovah. Okay, um, I think, um, the ASV, I think, uses it. There are a few versions that use it. That, that way, at least you know which word was used or which name was used in the passage. So, and, and Yahweh appeared to him by the turban trees as he was sitting in the tent in the heat of the day. This is your introduction. This is your introduction. Now the story begins. So if I was the one writing of you and I were writing today, our audience would expect us to write a little bit more commentary. It would not be enough to say, to write it the way Moses wrote. You would have to say, when Abraham was, you know, this number of years old, he had this wonderful experience where three men appeared to him. But actually, the three men appeared to him, appearing to him, that was God. You would, our communication these days, we leave nothing to the imagination. Everything is explicit. Maybe it's because we live in the age of litigation where if he says something and you don't say it precisely, somebody can, you know, pull you up on it. So you've got to be precise, okay? But clearly, in those days, it didn't matter that much. People could read between the lines and it was okay. So Abraham gives you an introda, uh, not Abraham, sorry, Moses, he gives you an introduction. And then you go to, to verse two, he says, here is the story proper, here is the narration of what happened. If you like, the first line is like a commentary. So he lifted his eyes and looked, and behold, three men were standing by him. And when he saw them, he ran from the tent door to meet them and bowed himself to the ground and said, my lord. And then guess what word is used there? Let's, let me know, you know, let me take you there so you can see for yourself. My lord. As you can see, Adonai. Adonai. My lord. So you have to ask yourself a simple question. Three men have showed up. Abraham says, my lord. Interestingly, when you, you, when you read some Bibles, like the ISV, and I think the Living Bible, they say, the, the Living Bible, I think, says my lords or something, and um, and ISV says ser's, or, or vice versa. But these, these, these ones try to show you that the title, Adonai, is when it's used in the plural form, the singular is Adon. When it's used in the plural form, Adonai, it's, it's plural. Except that it was a plural, or some people call it majestic plural, a plural that can be used to refer to one person. And whenever thi- this was done in the Bible, it was referring to the Lord. So it's very peculiar that Abraham should use a title that elsewhere in the Bible was only used for the Lord, for these men, these three men. So he says, my lord, if I have found favor in your sight, do not pass on by your servant. In other words, don't, you know, don't stop by, don't, don't, don't keep going, just stop by at my, my place. Please let a little water be brought and wash your feet and rest yourselves under the tree. And I will bring you a muscle of bread that you may refresh your heart. After that, you may pass by inasmuch as you have come to your servant. And they said, I want you to note the pronouns. You know, I, me, you, him, they, them. Please note the pronouns in this passage. They said, do as you have said. At this point, it's a conversation between Abraham and three men. And the narration, apart from the my lord bit, that's a little, leaves you with a little, a little bit of ambiguity. There is clarity, Abraham is talking to three men. Next, verse six. So Abraham hurried into the tent to Sarah and said, quickly make ready three measures of fine meal. Need it and make cakes. And Abraham ran to the head, took a tender and good calf, gave it to a young man, and he hastened to prepare it. So he took butter and milk and the calf which he had prepared to set before them. Yes, so just normal story, Abraham dealing with three men. And he stood by them under the tree as they ate. And they said to him, where is Sarah, your wife? So he said, here in the tent. Here, going by modern day rules of writing, since Abraham's name hasn't been mentioned here, you would need to say, so, and Abraham said, here in the tent, so that there's no, there's clarity as to who is talking, okay? And he said, who is the he? He said, I will certainly return to you according to the time of life, and behold, Sarah, your wife shall have a son. So wait a minute. Abraham is talking to three men. Abraham is talking to three men. Up to this point, it's be them, they, them, they, suddenly he. He said, who is this he? And look at the promise he makes, I will certainly return. Now, almost as if he's ignoring the two, the two men that came with him. He doesn't say, we will return, I will return. According to the time of life, look at the precision. In other words, he's referring to the, you know, how a woman will go through her cycles, then will have a child, you know, will, will, will fall pregnant and then, you know, carry the baby for nine months and then have a child. And he said, according to the time of life, in other words, time will run its course, and at the right time, I will come. And Sarah, your wife, will have a son. Now, the Bible says Sarah was listening in the tent door, which was behind him, who? Clearly, behind the person talking. So again, I'm showing you how modern word, modern way of writing is differs from the olden way. We would need to be more explicit. If you were saying this to, if you were narrating the story to somebody, it's about to say, who is the him you're referring to? Cause we don't talk like that, we try to make sure things are more explicit. But here it says him, clearly it's referring to the person who had been talking. The person who said, I will certainly return to you, to you according to the time of life. And Sarah was behind. Now Abraham and Sarah were old, well advanced in age, and Sarah had passed the age of childbearing. Therefore Sarah laughed within herself, saying, after I have grown old, shall I have pleasure, my lord being old also? Now, here is the bombshell. And the Lord said to Abraham, say, whoa, 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 wait a minute. Where is the Lord in this story? The only thing we know is that the Lord appeared to Abraham. At the beginning, that was Abraham's, that was Moses's introduction. But suddenly he goes to, then the Lord said, where did the, where did the Lord come from? Suddenly, where did he pop up from? The Lord said to Abraham, the first time I read this passage, or, you know, when I, or maybe years ago, when I used to read this passage, I, you know what I used to think? Abraham was there talking to these three men, but he was also communicating with the Lord in heaven, because as far as I was concerned, these men couldn't be God, therefore he was communicating with God in heaven. But then there's a problem. The Bible says Sarah was listening in the tent door, which was behind him. In other words, there was a conversation going on between Abraham and the three guests, and Sarah was just hiding and listening. This was not Abraham acting, you know, completely confused, talking to three men and then talking to God in heaven or, or whatever. Abraham was having a conversation with three men, Sarah was listening. But the narrator, Moses, the person writing the story, chip seeing every noun again, instead of saying then one of the men said, he says, the Lord said. Let's go and check this out, whether this theory is correct. Verse thirteen. And the Lord said, see, Jehovah. Remember what we said earlier, Abraham did not know God by the name Jehovah. So this was not Abraham saying that Jehovah said this to me. This is Moses writing it, and even when he gets to a point, instead of saying then one of the men said, he says Jehovah. Why? Because at the beginning of the story, he told you that it was Jehovah revealing himself to Abraham. So it makes sense that from time to time, he should show you that Jehovah was part of the conversation. Otherwise, the whole thing doesn't make sense. He says the Lord revealed himself to you, then he just talks about three men, three men, three men, and then end of story. Where is the Lord? Abraham had to, I keep calling Moses Abraham, Moses had to keep inserting the Lord, Yahweh, into the text to keep your mind focused on the fact that this was a, an interaction between God and Abraham. If you hadn't done that, it would just be a story about three men and we, and Abraham, and we would be struggling to understand how the Lord fits in all of this. So it's very important to, to bear that in mind. Okay, now let's move on. And the Lord said to Abraham, why did Sarah laugh, saying, shall I surely bear a child since I am old? Is anything too hard for the Lord? At the appointed time, I will return to you according to the time of life, and Sarah shall have a son. Note the authoritative nature of the Lord's words. Now, a few sessions ago, we talked about the angel Gabriel's encounter with Zachariah. Zachariah doubted what the angel said about him and his wife having a son. And the angel there was also unhappy with Zachariah, and he spoke authoritatively. But here's the difference, the angel said, I am Gabriel, standing in the presence of the Lord. And behold, I have given you great tidings from the Lord, and you have not believed. You see now, he, he almost immediately, before he did something authoritative, which was he told him, behold, you will be mute. Before he did that, he invoked his authority, the source of his authority, which was God. But what do you see here? This man doesn't say, he just says, what are you talking about? Is anything too hard for the Lord? Is anything too hard for the Lord? I am telling you that I will come and you will have a son. You won't just have a child, you will have a son. I'm telling you about the gender, the, the, the sex of the child. Your child will have a, you, you will have a, a son. But Sarah denied it, saying, I did not laugh, when she was afraid. And he said, no, but you did laugh. So we have seen so far that, look, there is, Moses, you know, recorded an interaction between Abraham and three men. But Moses already had hindsight, he knew that that encounter involved the Lord already. And he made that clear right at the beginning. When you, many chapters later, when Moses writes about Abraham offering or being told to offer his son, Isaac, unto the Lord. Do you know how he begins it? He came to pass that the Lord tested Abraham. He tested Abraham. But Abraham didn't know it was a test. So this is not Abraham said, writing his story and saying that the Lord tested, Abraham didn't know it was a test, he would have known after the fact, but he didn't know it was a test. But Moses writing later could simply give you that narrative, give you that commentary, God tested him. And then he goes on to narrate what actually happened. Okay, this is exactly the same structure. You know, the same story, story, um, outline that you're seeing here. It's a brief commentary at the beginning and then a narration of the actual historical fact. Now let's move on. Now the man rose from there and looked toward Sodom. You're beginning to see a narration again. And Abraham went with them to send them on their way. Nothing unusual, you've had guests, three men, they've come, they've eaten. Now they tell you, they, 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 they want to go head towards Sodom. And being a good host, what do you do? You try to see them off. Then looked, and the Lord said, shall I hide from Abraham what I am doing? Where did the Lord come me? This is Moses inserting God into the story once more, just to show you that this whole thing, the Lord was at the center of it. The Lord was at one of the three men, was the Lord. That's why there's a change of pronoun from they suddenly to a he. And when this he, this person talks, he doesn't even refer to the two. He doesn't say, I'm speaking on their behalf. He doesn't say, we will come back, no. He speaks on his own behalf. Now the Lord said, shall I hide? You see, here, once more, he's not even referring to the two. Shall I hide from Abraham what I am doing? In other words, what I'm saying, look, I do, this meal that we came to eat, eh, is in preparation, we, we are, we are on a mission, we are going somewhere. Shall I hide from Abraham what I am doing? In other words, what I'm saying, look, I do this meal that we came to eat. It's in preparation, we are, we are on the mission. We are going somewhere. There's something else we're going to do. And shall I hide this thing from Abraham? Shall I hide my next steps from Abraham? Saying that he will become a great and mighty nation, and all nations of the earth shall be blessed in him. If I have known him or have chosen him, in order that he may command his children and his household after him. That they keep the way of the Lord, to do righteousness and justice. That the Lord may bring to Abraham what he has spoken to him. And the Lord said, because the outcry against Sodom and Gomorrah is great. And because their sin is very grave, I will go down now and see whether they have done all together according to the outcry against it that has come to me. And if not, I will know. So he's just a lord sharing his plans with Abraham. Then look, suddenly we are back to narration. Then the man turned away from there and went towards Sodom. Have you seen the change? So it's like, wait a minute, you're talking about God. Suddenly here you are talking about the man. Because he's giving narration, then he give you commentary. Narration, commentary, intertwined. Then the man turned away from there and went towards Sodom, but Abraham still stood before the Lord. Before the Lord. Why did not say Abraham stood with one of the men? Instead, he said, Abraham stood before the Lord. It used to confuse me. I thought, you know, the man just went. The Abraham stood there to pray to God, heaven. Because why? Because I'm a religion, I had a religious mindset. You have a story in front of you. Instead of focusing on what the story says, you read into that story. Your own religious beliefs affect your interpretation of the story. It doesn't say that Abraham looked into heaven, no, he said, Abraham stood before the Lord. You have to ask, when you start stand before somebody, what do you stand? It means the person is standing in front of you. But if you have further questions, read the next verse. It says, and Abraham came near. Came near where? Where is the Lord? The Lord is to the left or to the right or to? The Lord is everywhere. So when he says, and Abraham came near, he was talking about someone who was physically present. And he drew near. So why did he need to draw near? Because as a good host and somebody who revered the three guests. He wasn't walking with them side by side like homies, yes, and here, and talking. He, he distanced himself a little bit. The way, when they came to eat, the Bible says he stood whilst they ate, like a waiter. And when they were going, as even though he was leading them, he wasn't there like pally with them. No, he, he kept a distance. So he drew near to speak to the Lord because he had something to say. He said, look, would you also destroy the righteous with the wicked? Clearly, Abraham was talking to the person who said, shall I hide from Abraham? What I plan to do with Sodom. A simple conversation. He said this to Abraham. So Abraham drew near and said. Will you do this also? But two of the men walked on. This was a conversation between Abraham and one of the men who was the Lord. How do I know that? Genesis chapter nineteen. So in Genesis chapter nineteen, it reads. Now the two angels came to Sodom in the evening. And Lot was sitting in the gate of Sodom. When Lot saw them, he rose to meet them, and he bowed himself with his face toward the ground. And he said, hear now, my lords. Please, and by the way, the Lord here, you see, it's, they've used lowercase, lords. So here. Hear now, my lords. The word used there is not Adonai. It's a different word. It's Adon. Now please turn into your servant's house and spend the night and wash your feet. Then you may rise early and go on your way. So Lot is doing something similar to what Abraham did. Abraham saw three men, he ran to them and invited them in. Lot saw two men, run to them and invited them. But note, it says now the two angels, question is, did Lot know he was talking to angels? No, he was addressing men. So clearly, that too is a commentary. Moses identified the two men that came to Sodom as angels. And then he said, the two angels. When somebody uses the definite article, that's something, you have to ask yourself a simple question. Who are you referring to? Who are you referring to? Somebody say, oh, he is the king. It's the king of what? He is a king. Oh, okay. But if you say thee, you have to, you have to substantiate, you have to clarify exactly what you mean. So the two angels, you have to ask yourself, where did the two angels come from? How can Moses suddenly rise up and say the two angels? It's because Genesis chapter nineteen follows Genesis chapter eighteen. And in chapter eighteen, he told you that the men walked away towards Sodom. But Abraham stood before the Lord. Clearly, it was the Lord, the Lord and two angels visited Abraham. The two angels walked towards Sodom and came to Sodom, arrived in the evening. Whereas the Lord stood with Abraham and talked. So that's how we know there was the Lord and two angels. So let's go back to chapter eighteen. Now Abraham came near and said, would you also destroy the righteous with the wicked? Suppose there were fifty, fifty righteous within the city. Would you also destroy the place and not spare it for the fifty righteous that were in it? Far be it from you to do such a thing as this, to slay the righteous with the wicked. So that the righteous should be as the wicked. Far be it from you, shall not the judge of all the earth do right? Abraham was really having a go at the Lord. So the Lord said, if I find in Sodom fifty righteous men, fifty righteous within the city. Then I will spare all the place for their sakes. Then Abraham answered and said, indeed, now I whom but I am but dust and ashes have taken it upon myself to speak to the Lord. Suppose there were five less than fifty righteous, would you destroy all the city for lack of five? So he said, if I, if I find there forty-five, I will not destroy it. It's a very interesting, um. Discussion about maths, isn't it? And Abraham says fifty minus five, and then the Lord said the answer is forty-five. And, and he spoke to him yet again and said, suppose there should be forty, forty, forty found there, sorry. So he said, I will not do it for the sake of forty. Then he said, let not the Lord be angry, and I will speak. Suppose thirty should be found there. So he said, I will not do it if I find thirty there. And he said, indeed, now I have taken it upon myself to speak to the Lord. Suppose twenty should be found there. So he said, I will not destroy it for the sake of twenty. Then he said, let not the Lord be angry, and I will speak. But once more, suppose ten should be found there. And he said, I will not destroy it for the sake of ten. So the Lord went his way. As soon as he had finished speaking with Abraham, and Abraham returned to his place. Now, does this seem to you that the Lord was floating in the cloud somewhere? The Abraham talking to him and the Lord floated away? No. In fact, let's go to Bible Gateway. Let's, let's find out what the text actually says. See, and the Lord went his way. So the phrase went his way is represented by one Hebrew word. The phrase went his way here is represented by the Hebrew word, yalak. Says to go walk or come. To go walk, come, depart, proceed, move, go away. Die, live, that would not apply. So you can see it's to do with somebody moving from one place to another, but it's really to walk is some, a verb that is used of human activity, of moving from one place to another. When you, you know, when you look at the various instances that the word yalak has been used. And if you want to know, scroll down. And it will show you all the various instances that the word yalak has been used. Yeah, so like in Genesis alone, it's been used eighty-two times. Okay, we can click on that. And we'll see examples. And the Lord God said unto the serpent, because thou hast done this, thou had cursed above all the cattle and above um, all the, every beast of the field, upon the belly shall thou go. You see, it's referring to the movement of the serpent. It will move on the earth. Okay. And the waters prevailed and increased greatly upon the earth, and the ark went upon the face of the waters. So here it's referring to ark movement. But it's to do with movement and you know, unless we, we, the test has suggested that the Lord had appeared in the cloud or something. There would be no need for that expression of the Lord then moving away. The only reference to the Lord in the passage is the Lord being one of the three men. And therefore, this third person, who was the Lord, he literally walked away. He walked away. Now the bit in the puzzle that I have yet to solve is where did the Lord go from there? Because two angels appeared to, or rather arrived in Sodom. So when the Lord left Abraham, where did he go? But when you go to Genesis nineteen, there's something interesting there. So we're going to jump right to, right onto the judgment of Sodom. Okay, no, I think it'd be better if I just read it, then there'll be no confusion. Now the two angels came to Sodom in the evening, and Lot was sitting in the gate of Sodom. When Lot saw them, he rose to meet them, and he bowed himself with his face toward the ground. And he said, hear now, my lords, please turn into your servant's house and spend the night and wash your feet. Then you may rise early and go your way, go on your way. And they said, no, but we will spend the night in the open square. But he insisted strongly, so they turned into him and entered his house. Then he made them a feast and bade on living bread, and they ate. Now before they lay down, the men of the city of, the men of the city, the men of Sodom, both old and young. All the people from every quarter surrounded the house. And he called to Lot and said to him, what are the men who came to you tonight? Bring them out to us that we may know them kindly. So Lot went out to them through the door, the doorway. Shut the door behind him and said, please, my brethren, do not do so wickedly. See now, I have two daughters who have not known a man. Please let me bring them out to you. And you may do to them as you wish. Only do nothing to these men, since this is the reason we have come under the shadow of my roof. And they said, stand back. Then they said, this one came in to stay here, and he keeps acting as a judge. Now we would deal with you worse than with them. So they pressed hard against the man Lot and came near to break down the door. But the men reached out their hands. I want you to notice something. The men reached out their hands. Do you remember that at the beginning, Moses referred them as angels? He said, the two angels came. Now he says the man. It's just about, in some cases, he's narrating, and in some cases, he is commenting. Very important. So, so they pressed hard against the man, and, um, but the men reached out their hands and pulled Lot into the house with them. And shut the door. And they struck the men who were at the doorway of the house with blindness, both small and great. So that they became weary, trying to find the door. Then the man said to Lot, have you anyone else here? Son-in-law, your sons, your daughters, and whomever you have in the city, take them out of this place. For we will destroy this place, because the outcry against them has grown great before the face of the Lord. And the Lord has sent us to destroy it. Have you seen the language, the change of language here? These guys are deriving their authority from the Lord, and they are making it clear, we have been sent, we are here to do a job. But when the Lord was speaking, it was, I will do this, I will do that, not the difference. So Lot went out and spoke to his sons-in-law, who had married his daughters, and said. Get up, get out of this place, for the Lord will destroy this city. But to his sons-in-law, he seemed to be joking. When the morning dawned, the angels urged Lot to hurry. So this whole thing happened all over, overnight. Saying, arise, take your wife and your two daughters who are here, lest you be consumed in the punishment of the city. And while he lingered, the man took hold of his hand, his wife's hand, and the hands of his two daughters. The Lord being merciful to him. And they brought him out and set him outside the city. So it came to pass, when they had brought them outside, that he said. Escape for your life, do not look behind. You, you, you don't look behind you, nor stay anywhere in the plain. Escape to the mountains, lest you be destroyed. Then the Lord said to them, please know, the Lord said to them, please know, my lords. Indeed, now your servant has found favor in your sight. And you have increased your mercy, which you have shown me by saving my life. But I cannot escape to the mountains, lest some evil overtake me and I die. See now, this city is near enough to flee to. And it is a little one. Please let me escape there. Is it not a little one? And my soul shall live. And he said to him, see, I have favored you concerning this thing also. In that I will not overthrow this city for which you have spoken. Hurry, escape there, for I cannot do anything until you arrive there. Therefore, the name of the city was called Zohar. The sun had risen upon the earth when Lot entered Zohar. See the precision. The Bible is very precise about what's going on. Then the Lord rained brimstone and fire on Sodom and Gomorrah from the Lord out of heaven. So he overthrew those cities, all the plain and all the inhabitants of the cities, and what grew on the ground. See, note something in this verse twenty-four. Then the Lord rained brimstone and fire on Sodom and Gomorrah from the Lord out of the heavens. Does that make sense to you grammatically? Let's go to Bible, no, Bible study tools dot com. Genesis nineteen. Verse twenty-four. Then the Lord re- rained upon Sodom. Which Lord is this? Jehovah. So Jehovah rained brimstone, fire and brimstone upon, uh, brimstone upon Sodom. But then that should be enough. The Lord rained upon Sodom. Finish. That's okay. We don't need anything. In our modern language, we don't need anything, it's enough. And even then, there was no need. If you read through the Bible, you will never, you know, you don't come across these sort of phrases all, all, all the time. And we know that every word written in the Bible has been put there for a reason. The Lord rained from the Lord. He, the Lord rained fire and brimstone from the Lord out of heaven. What's going on here? My reading of this is this. The Lord who was with Abraham, who talked to Abraham. Who Abraham negotiated with. Rained fire and brimstone from the Lord who was in heaven. Because there's the Father in heaven. And the Son was the one that came to visit Abraham. And he sent this from heaven, from his father. So in a nutshell. Genesis eighteen and nineteen proves to us Proves to us. That God is more than one person. The Lord was on earth with Abraham. But the Lord was in heaven. The Lord visited with two men. But he did not speak on their behalf. He did not make himself equal with them, he set himself apart from them. Then, to show you that the two men were angels, they were his servants, he sent them ahead of himself. To Sodom. And he spoke to Abraham. That there's something beautiful there that you we mustn't miss, we we mustn't miss. The Bible tells us that we have been made in the image of God. And that to none of the angels did he say, sit at right hand. That none of the angels has he given the glory and the honor that he has given the saints because of his son. Here, look. The Lord speaks to his son. He sends the angels away. To show you the difference. Angels are servants, sent to go and do a job. But here he has a conversation. Where this Abraham had the, the, the audacity, the temerity to, to negotiate. With the king of kings and the lord of lords. But Abraham was considered to be in a different category. Than the angels. I think I'm gonna stop here. And give you an opportunity to comment on what you've heard so far. If you, um, what your views are, you know, you all shared your views about who, who you think. Um, the text is referring to. The identity of the three men. So based on what you've heard so far, are you convinced? Do you have a different view? Do you still have questions, areas of doubt? Please, let's hear you. Let's hear from you, brother. Okay, so um. Yeah, I'll start with you, Araba, this time.
Uh. Okay, well, yes, I have. Pretty much understood most of the confusion in my head. Uh. And like, you know, the Lord left, I mean, Abraham was before the Lord, but they had left and all those things. You know?
Yeah.
So, so uh, it's like, you just can't study the Bible, just pick it up and study, like, read them. That is it, because the context and everything. Uh, it's like, we just. Now I'm getting triggered, because it means that, like, you have to do more. Studies, like.
Yeah, in depth, in-depth study of the word.
Yes, because otherwise, then this is what brings all this confusion.
Mm-hmm.
And it was like, most in check, you know, I don't know if the most pastors don't do in-depth, because. All along, we thought that these were angels.
Mm-hmm.
For all these years, you understand?
Mm-hmm.
And now that you are able to go in there, you know, now, I'm, I mean, I can understand. Why, you know, he was so before the Lord, then they had left and all those things. The confusion is, is like, sure, it's gone.
Amen.
So. Oh, God bless you so much.
Amen, amen, God bless you too. Yes, it's a confusing passage, and I'm not going to lie to you, I haven't always understood it. This, you know, the questions from the Bible studies forced me to drill down, really get to understand this thing, so. So thank you all for your questions, you know, and that's why I'm always encouraging you to ask questions, because that forced me to, to really, really study this, um, yeah. Good. So, um, Selena, welcome, um. Do you want to share your views on the passage? On the, on, on, on today's session? And, um, anything you've learned that you want to share with us?
I'm just literally coming, good evening.
Oh, good evening, sorry, I didn't realize you wanted to just join us. Okay, no problem, no problem.
Put in when you finish, I have to go back and listen.
Okay, okay, no, I really, I recommend going back and listening, um, yeah, good, good. Okay, um, Crazy, I think you, you've been here with us for a little while, um, so maybe I'll come to you next, um. Anything to share with us, please, love.
Hey, please, eh eh, I'm Richmond, and I'm, I'm same by Crazy, so I don't know, is there?
Ah, okay, I didn't realize that you're also Crazy, doesn't matter, then please have a go. We have two Crazies on the, on the platform, no, that's okay, doesn't matter, please, let's, let's hear from you.
Okay, so, okay, so Richmond can talk now?
Yes, yes, Richmond can talk, yes.
All right. My questions are somewhere, but, okay, so first, my question is. Was Abraham not aware? God himself has visited him? What you read to us?
Yes.
He wasn't aware?
Okay, so, eh eh, I, I think he was aware. I think he was aware, and eh eh, the reason why I think he was aware is because. Right from the outset, his behavior is a little bit intriguing. You see, the Bible is so good at the way it gives us comparisons. Chapter eighteen, the beginning of chapter eighteen and the beginning of chapter nineteen, they are similar, so that we can compare them. Three men come to visit Abraham in chapter eighteen, two men come to visit, uh, Lot. Now, I said not come to visit, but you know, uh, uh, come to Sodom and then Lot, Lot calls them, calls them in. But if you notice, there is respect in both cases, both Abraham and, um, Lot. Address the visitors with respect. But Abraham goes a step further. First of all, he uses a title only reserved for God as the first thing. So that, that's the first clue that this man knew he wasn't just dealing with ordinary men. And that's because he had been hearing from God all the way from chapter twelve. So Abraham had a history with God, and the Bible doesn't tell us all about all the different manifestations. But it's possible that the Lord had manifested to him before in this very form, so it wasn't anything new to him. Now, when you look, pardon me, when you look at his interaction with the men. The way he would stand whilst they were eating. And the way he didn't question or challenge them when one of them said. I will come to you in the time of life and you have a child. You know, Sarah was laughing. She wasn't laughing because she was thinking, who is this man making this noise? Instead, she said, huh, how can that happen, given that I'm so old? In other words, she knew that the person had the right to say what he was saying. You understand?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, so she knew the person had the right to say, in other words, she knew this was somebody with. Authority that men don't have. Otherwise, if he was an ordinary neighbor, you'd say, what are you talking about? That's maybe you're just wishing me well, but you don't have the authority. For somebody to say, I will come to you at this time. If they were speaking in our day and age, they would have said, I'll come to you in November. And you will have a child, simple. That's what they would have said. So, and you, if somebody told you like that, somebody told your wife, you know, you, let's say, you had in that situation, your wife wanted to have a child, and someone said, I will come, and you. You say, wait, I mean, who are you? That you will come. Clearly, the language that was used was so authoritative, that if the person saying it was not divine. Abraham had every right to question him. And when he, when Sarah started laughing. I mean, and she didn't laugh out aloud, she laughed quietly in her own heart. And instantly, the word was, why did she laugh? And then the Lord challenged it, and Sarah said, no, 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 I didn't laugh. You see, so there is a lot in the story that shows you that not just Abraham, Sarah as well knew. The person they were talking to. Was divine. And when it came to the negotiation, when this person said. I'm going to Sodom, and I'm going to destroy Sodom. And then he started negotiating with, I mean. One man going to go to a city and destroy, so, oh, 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 how can you do that? Unless he knew that this was divine. So that there are clues plastered all over showing you that Abraham knew he was who he was talking to. Does that make sense?
Yes, please, it does. And my last question is.
Mm-hmm.
One thing that amazes me. Why didn't the Lord himself join the angels to go to Sodom and Gomorrah? And then God.
It's a very good question. Yes, it's, it's like the angels.
It's telling me, it's a that. God came to, to talk to Sarah and, eh eh, Abraham because of maybe, eh eh, how should I say? Eh, for Sarah, Sarah giving, but it's that God, God came to have a discussion on the bed giving or how they were going to give bed. What, what, is, is it that, that discussion was so important to God than? Him going to Sodom and Gomorrah to, to destroy that, that city? Eh, because that thing, eh eh, it's confusing me a bit. Please, I hope, I hope you've understood.
And I understand.
You know the reason why? If, if, if their mission was to go and, and, and destroy Sodom and Gomorrah. Why did God? Stayed with Abraham and then had discussion with him all this while, whilst the two angels went to Sodom and Gomorrah?
Yes, it's a question that I have also, and that, that intrigues me, and I don't, I'm not sure that I have a, a, a very, you know, good answer to that. But one thing that I know about the Lord, the Bible says that his eyes are too pure than to behold iniquity. So I don't believe that the Lord, it, that it takes any pleasure in coming anywhere near iniquity. He wanted Abraham to be aware of what was going on. And also, remember that anything that God does, he has got future generations in mind. So even though those things were happening, they were happening for you and me, he knew that day will come when Richmond and Ben will be discussing this issue. And he made those events play out as they played out, so they would be written in the Bible, so that we would all have lessons. So he could easily have just sent the fire upon, um, Sodom without all of this, you know, the whole, all the whole encounter in Genesis chapter eighteen. But I think he wanted Abraham to know about it. He wanted that the whole negotiating process that happened to also show that the Lord does not delight in the death of the wicked, which Ezekiel tells us. It's not something that he just wakes up one day, say, who shall I kill? Let me send fire here, let me send brimstone here. He said, even if I find ten people, I will spare the whole city. And it turned out that there were not even ten people there. In fact, there was only Lot. The New Testament teaches us that Lot was the only just man there, and it was because of Lot that the angels were willing to rescue anybody associated with Lot. So, one, I, I don't believe the Lord loves to behold iniquity directly. And he, he, he sent the angels there instead of going there himself to be, to experience what happened there. Two, it may not be a perfect answer, but that's the answer that I have at the moment. And two, um. That whole story played out because it needed to be written out, so that future generations would learn about it, they would learn about his character. They would not jump to conclusion about, you know, his judgment, because God doesn't just exercise judgment, because he, he likes to do that. The Sodom, people of Sodom and Gomorrah had been given many, many, many years to repent, and they had not, you know, exercised that, um, opportunity. I hope this is a little bit helpful.
It's that, it's that, I think, I have to leave my friends or my family guys also. I mean, because if I, I have lots of persons.
Questions, yeah, okay, I like that, I like that.
I'll be asking this for now, I think I'll, I'll end it for you.
Okay, okay, okay. So let's see, if someone else has a question, Bishop, welcome, um, anything to add?
I'm not feeling too good, that's why I.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry to hear, we pray that the Lord sends, you know. We pray the Lord's healing through your body right now, in Jesus's name. Okay, uh, Sue, are you ready now?
I, I think so.
Okay, good, that's how we go then.
Okay, I, I, I know, I have just a comment, not, not a question at the moment, I.
Okay.
I just want to, to, to mention the fact, how odd I am about the fact that we read these things every day, I mean, we read. But you realize that we gloss over a lot of. A lot of detail. Eh, without noticing that these are pointers to things God wants us to know, and I liked something he said that, eh. Every, every word is put there for a reason, it's not just, you know, eh eh, eh. A couple of vocabulary words, you know, strung together to, um, just to give us some, some meaning, you know, but. It's important that we don't just gloss over, um, how, um, how the things are arranged, and the sequence of events. And, eh, the, the, the grammar of the words that are put there, because they are put there. For us, for a good reason, and I think that going forward, I am not going to read the Bible in the manner in which I, I do anymore. But to understand that everything over there is supposed to, um. Give us a full, um, image of who God is, um, to us, thank you.
Amen, amen, amen. Yeah, you said something very, very helpful there, you see. The word of God is like a rich meal that requires effort to digest. In order to extract all the nutrients from it. You see, when, when you are very, very hungry, let's say somebody who's got diabetes and he's got low blood sugar, and, um. You want to get some sugar, you want to get some calories into them quickly. You give them. Sugar. You give them glucose or Coca-Cola. Just a can of normal Coke, not Diet Coke, normal Coke is the quickest way to get some glucose into someone, to save them from, you know. Um, going into hypoglycemia and suffering the consequences. So. What does that mean? Coke. The lump of sugar doesn't require effort to digest. It goes into the bloodstream pretty quickly. Okay? But. When you want that, that blood sugar, with, with that, that sugar that you consume, or the Coca, it's not going to sustain you. Just for a short period of time, your blood sugar will be restored, but you then need a proper meal. A carbohydrate that will release the sugar slowly into your bloodstream as well. So that you don't develop another hypoglycemic episode after the, the first one. So that's a principle by which they manage diabetes. Now, the things in nature, they offer clues about the things of God. That's what Romans chapter one tells us. The word of God can be treated like that lump of sugar or that can of Coca-Cola. That's how many of us approach the word of God. So you get a devotional, you open it, you read a passage very quickly, and then dash off to go to work. What you've got is the fast food of the word of God. You haven't got the real stuff that is going to nourish your body. The Bible says, do not be deceived. God is not mocked. Whatsoever a man soaks, he shall reap. If you sow to the flesh, you will, of the flesh reap corruption, but if you sow to the spirit, you will reap life. What does that mean? If your whole investment in your Christian faith amounts to five minutes of quick reading of some passage of the Bible, that's what you will reap. But if on the other hand, you approach it. Like, you need a proper, let's say you eat banko, or you eat fufu, or you eat some, um. Some proper hefty meal, some pounded yam or something. The body needs to take its time to break that thing down in order to extract that nutrient. But trust me, when the body has done that, that meal can last you many hours. Much longer than that can of Coca-Cola. That's how the word of God is, when you go in and you take your time, like Sue said, you, you, you do a word study. You can do a word study, you can do a character study, you can say, I want to learn all about David. Then do a search, anywhere David's name appear in the Bible, you study it. That's how you will get to know God's mind. Relating to what God wanted to say to the world about David, why God put David in the Bible in the first place. Otherwise, you'll just be, oh, David one story here, uh, Goliath here, this, that, this jointed stories, there is no continuous narrative that would enrich your life. But if you go and study that David's life, every mention of the name David, not just David's life in the first, first and second Samuel, no. You read about David in the whole Bible, even in the book of Revelation, because his name appears in the book of Revelation. Then you will understand God's mind. In relation to David, David. In relation to David. The same thing, you can take Abraham. You can take Elijah, Jacob, Isaac, Joseph, these names are not there for decoration. God is saying, I am trying to tell you something about this man's life, that's why I put them there. So if you spend the time to study their lives, You get the full message. So that's like studying, you know, um, the character study, you can also study just words. You just the names of God. You can just study that. And now that you know, I've shown you how to do it, you, you go on Bible's gateway, you, you search for a passage, Then you go on, um, Bible Study Tools dot com, and you use the interlinear facility there To check the meaning of the words and the various times that the words have been used. That's how you will be enriched by the word of God. And then when somebody comes and poses a question, what you do is you dip into the riches that you have already accumulated. And you use that to answer the question. When somebody asks a question, And it's like I look in my archive and I see, oh, I haven't got anything there, means I have to go and study. So there were questions, there are questions that have been asked before, and I've told people, we will come to that. Why? Because I'm going to study. I'm going to study. If I have an immediate answer, I'll give it. If I don't have an answer, I'm going to study. But that studying is not one day matter, it's not thirty minutes matter. Some topics, it might take you months, some topics will take you years. But when you study them, The, the rewards are incredible. So I really, really recommend this to everybody. Okay, um, Let's see, let's come back to you, um, Crazy Rev, I don't know if you, maybe where you are, you can't talk. If that's the case, then, you know, you can just type something in the, in the chat, so that we know that you can't, um, You can't talk, um, otherwise, I think everybody has, um, spoken.
All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening, good evening.
Yeah, um, I guess a quick one, um, it's been very interesting. Um, and to add a little to my Love brother, Crazy, from the other side.
Yes, Richmond, yeah.
Yeah. What we need to understand as we go along this study, um, Especially Gen- Genesis, Exodus, Leviticus, The five books of Moses is that They are not eyewitness account. When this event happened, Moses was not born. Moses was born in Exodus. So most of them is how he saw it and is writing it. So some of the wording, like, um, Ben was trying to help us understand. It's not like in this time and age whereby you'll be much concerned about the specifics. Because of his audience, he wrote it in such a way that they could understand. Secondly, Because he hasn't made a lot of things clear, sometimes we have to be careful The way we interpret it, so we don't bring our assumptions into them. You know, we are silent when God is silent, and then we are loud when God is loud. Other than that, there are a lot of things we could bring in, for example, Why didn't God destroy the devil when it is all knowing, knowing this guy is going to cause trouble? Then we'll be going on and on, you see what I mean? So let us go along the line that, um, our able, um, Lecturer is helping us So that we can understand the context within which God has written this for us. And as we do, our understanding is enlightened, and we can grow in the work. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. God bless you. Okay, so, um, before we, we wrap up, or before we finish, um, Richmond, do you have any burning question? You know, I know you said you had a few, but you wanted to let others go, so please feel free.
I think I'm okay for that.
Okay, for now, okay, okay. You feel free to, to always share that they, they make the discussion livelier, and you know, they enrich, you know, for everybody. So, so, yeah, we, we, we like questions.
Thank you.
Good. God, God bless you all, and, uh, we will meet again next week by God's grace. Have a lovely week.